To the agenda.
So we have two added action items. And you'll notice it's not on the short, I don't know, additional action items, 10-1 and 10-2. And class of 2001 graduation requirements, our program increase. And the line of program increases on the industrial, on the FACS at the high school that I talked about last time that may be coming. So, and the graduation requirements is to update, to take care of the issue that we've found out, that we've got.
Okay. All right, looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Lindsay is our second.
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, motion carries. Um, we will, nobody's here to talk with us, right?
No, there's somebody attending.
Okay, board committee reports. You guys want to cover our...
Laura, you want to cover? Uh, fiscal personnel met this evening, and we kind of had to link the agenda, so we'll just start with the first thing we discussed was plans at the Glendon Felton site regarding kindergarten enrollment. Um, the fiscal personnel committee, we have directed the administration to follow our policy 509.2 in regards to open enrollment, uh, children to keep the class ratio, the class size to go no more than 22 kids per class. Um, so we'll, you know, now the administrative assistants are back in the office, we might see some changes if people drop, or we have new people coming into the district, so, um, but we just felt like we had this policy in place, and we might have some staff that are open enrolling their children at the Glendon site, but if we need each two, Brian will meet with them and discuss what is happening, and we'll offer, if there's any volunteers, if not, uh, follow the policy and do a lottery process. So, anybody have any questions on that?
To Dilworth's site then?
To the Dilworth's site, because Dilworth is at 17.
Seventeen.
Yeah, because we're good there.
We're good, yeah. Dilworth is still open, Glendon Felton is closed in the kindergarten.
We do have one section, the fifth grade section is closed.
Closed.
In Dilworth.
The whole section, they're all...
Closed, because they're all in Glendon, but that's the only one that's closed.
Uh, any questions on that? All right, um, we just have some staffing updates. Uh, we are still working on, I don't know if everybody remembers, that we had talked to Lake Country about getting, building maintenance assistant positions, having one in Dilworth, one in Glendon. Um, we are waiting to hear from our attorney, uh, because Lake's Country will not be able to assist us in that hiring process. Um, if you have any questions, please go into detail with Brian, he had an email, so we are gonna...
And I did put it on the operations committee, so you can talk about there too.
Okay.
So tonight, we got some time after the meeting.
So, Brian will fill you in on that. Unfortunately, we are, have not been able to secure an industrial tech. Wayne's been working vigorously trying to find someone to help with that position, but currently, for the first semester of school, we are just not going to be able to offer any courses in industrial tech. Um, our FACS position that we had hired was a .6, so in the packet tonight, you're going to see, we're going to increase that position to a 1.0 FTE, and they'll be adjusting those classes to help with some elective courses. So Wayne and Brian and Katie Omen have been working vigorously trying to get the schedule aligned for our students, so. Any questions on that? We're gonna send Brian to a job fair, right, in Wisconsin?
We're gonna go to a job fair.
We're gonna find someone, we're gonna find someone. Paraprofessional positions, you know, we have people come and go, no matter how hard Mary Ann is working to fill these. Uh, we have two on the DGF middle school that we need, and one in the DGF high school. So, we'll be seeing, hopefully get those positions filled. Uh, we appreciate all the work that Mary Ann does on that. Uh, Brian updated us on staffing, current licenses. We've got nine that he's been watching. Some of these are people that are adding licensure to, um, their already current license, and there's also some new teachers that are coming in that are just getting their license for the first time. So, he's keeping an eye on that. We've got nine, we're waiting on six.
Correct.
For the first day of school. Um, so he will keep us posted on that. Um, and then Brian just reviewed the special election timeline, something that him and Jeannie went over to make sure that we're doing everything we need to do up to the bond in November. And then, uh, updated revenue projection model update finally got done at MDE does that, right?
Yep.
So that, uh, and it was a positive for us, we're not losing any money.
Right.
So that's good.
We have to leave about $50,000 more then.
So that's good news.
And a lot of us on home state credits and what else not.
And then confidential employee negotiations, Brian is just starting to work on getting some dates set up for that, so. Um, anything Laura or Sandy to add to that?
My hope would be that we could do, you know, the confidential, I would, in a perfect world, I would love to be able to bring something forward to the board on the 26th, you know, the next board meeting, so that we're done with all of these contracts. I don't see the confidential, you know, typically, that has been me going around talking to all of them, talk to the board, committee, what looks like it makes sense, and then I sit down one-on-one with all of them. We can either, you know, because those positions are so different, each one of them, that if you want to bring them all in for a meeting, you can do that, but again, you're talking about anything from Jeannie's and Eric's and to James and Tammy, I mean, those are all the confidential ones. So, in the past, we've tried to give the same percentages to all of them. Last year, I think it was, you know, that, you know, two and a half, 2.75s. So, we had the same type of an issue that we had with some of the other ones, when you think about when we were comparing the teachers and some of those that were in the threes, and the other ones already had been taking some of the lesser. So, I'd like to see that type of approach, the same way that we realize the fact that they took it last time, and, but again, we'll talk about it in confidential group negotiations.
Question, the industrial tech teacher. What is the issue? Money, or there's just nobody there?
Well, there's multiple issues. Number one, Riley, and it was a, when I was meeting with the MDE last week, and talking to one of the other superintendents that's also looking, in the state of Minnesota last year, there was five people that actually graduated with that license. Minnesota's programs are not offering industrial tech. In fact, right now, there isn't a college that actually even offers a major of industrial technology. The only way you can get it in Minnesota, and that's, a lot of times you have to go through special work to get it, like through extension offices, what else, not for ag. And that a lot of times is with the North Dakota or South Dakota colleges. North Dakota State, South Dakota State, that's where they're producing the ag. And the ag is the one that everybody's having to go to, to get the license now. On the other side of the state, Wisconsin does produce the industrial tech with the machining and all of that. And that's why, when we're going to talk about job fairs, we need to go out of state to try to get these positions hired. I had to do it when I was up north, we're gonna have to do it again here. And Brandon Loenick and I have talked about the same thing. Down the road, as we do this career academy, we need to go out and really start looking, and we will attract some top-notch ones because of what we're going to be able to offer. So, most likely, Morehead and DGF will both be attending that, one of those career fairs in Wisconsin. And we'll probably want to go down to South Dakota also, because we gotta start tapping into a different market if we're going to get this stuff.
Do, are there any other area schools that are close by that offer industrial tech that don't have a full-time? Are they, do they job share with, or share, no? Okay.
Believe me, when we have our meetings, when we have our meetings, we, everybody's strong out what we're looking for, and we just put it out on the whole Lake's Country superintendent email list. Been doing that since, uh, May. So, you know, it's just ironic that we, you know, we do have somebody living in the district, and maybe by second semester, you know, that, as I was telling the personnel committee, if there was ever a year that this had happened to us, that we can actually, um, probably, um, it's not gonna, it's not gonna have as negative connotations for the kids, it would be this year. And I say it for this reason, we can add in the FACS department some time. The other thing is, because as you're gonna see with our graduation requirements, some of those same kids at the senior high level that would be taking that course, or those courses, need to take a general chemistry or a general physics that is not on their schedule currently. So, if there's ever a time, it's this first semester. And who knows, by second semester, maybe it will work out.
Right. Hopefully.
Sandy, do you want to share your news from MSBA?
I'll keep working on it.
Sure.
Yeah.
I had received a letter from MSBA today saying that we have a legislator that is receiving the 2019, MSBA Legislator of Distinction Award, and that will be Paul Markort, so they will be sending more information toward that, and we'll recognize him.
Denise will probably come up again, I'm assuming.
That's awesome.
We're very fortunate to have, and work so diligently for this district, and that's an awesome honor for him, so.
And what I can tell you on this industrial tech, which goes hand-in-hand with the work with Paul, and last week when I was at the conference, I sat with, um, superintendent from Hutchinson, one from the Iron Range, one from Mankato. Uh, there was actually five of us that were all talking about the same thing, about these career academies. And so what we're doing is, we're gonna be working with MREA to set up a statewide meeting of these different entities, of these school districts, to put together to see, because what we want to have happen is we want MREA to lead this, on some of this legislation that we need. And in particular, um, the legislation is about getting some of the funding streams set up for us, which every one of those things is going to help us getting the industrial tech, and some of these things moving forward. So, there is good news on the horizon with everything with our career academy and the industrial tech.
Quick side question on that. I'm assuming none of our current staff has cross licensure of any kind?
No, not in that one. We have even, we've been trying to recruit at least one current staff member to add it as a tier-two to his license, because he does a lot of handiwork things, and that is still, you know, that's a work in progress, but, um, I just, you know, the thing is, it just creates another hole at this point in time, because if that person came out of the classroom, then we'd have to turn around and try to advertise, because we'd have to advertise for a position, put a long-term sub in, which, if you're a parent of an elementary student, you really don't want to have your child start out with a long-term sub at the start of the year. You don't have to.
Staff probably isn't very happy if they were forced to change or whatever either, so.
Well, and they have to agree to even add it to their license.
Right.
So we go first. If they currently had licensure.
And we do not have anybody with that license, we don't even...
Do we have the authority to assign them if we had to, if they had it?
If they had it, we definitely do have the authority. We just don't have anybody with it. So, we don't have any options that we can control, let's put it that way.
All right, we'll move on to 6.2, the superintendent report.
So, all my stuff other than the fact, like I said last week, um, the conference, MDE was good, was very good. Um, actually, one of the best speakers that I've heard at our superintendent conference, and it happened to be the first lady for the state of Minnesota, and she was absolutely outstanding, and it was all about partnering with area districts and other entities to improve offerings for kids. She's, uh, um, been teaching the Mankato system for twenty-some years, both her and her husband, the governor, have been teachers for a long time, and she's been for like thirty-some years. Thing is, they, she's also been working with the prison systems in nineteen states, and so this whole prison, you know, um, education to prison pipeline, um, she was telling a story about the fact that in one of the states that she's working with, they've created debate teams in the prison system, and the debate team beat Harvard's debate team and Oxford's debate team on a debate about prison reform. And so we're looking at the possibilities. I talked to her for about fifteen minutes when she got done, and was explaining everything we're doing with this career academy. And so, if there was ever an opportunity to get through legislation, um, to get improvements, it's going to be with this governor, and they so want to see more options for kids, for routes for kids. So, I think we got a perfect opportunity with what we're trying to do as districts around here. So, I'm, uh, we're even, Brandon and I were talking about the idea of, you know, do we look to bring her up to speak to all of our staff, whether it be in January or next fall? Because she's just a dynamic speaker, and, and she had a, she had the whole, all the superintendents very quiet, they weren't even on their phones, checking their phones, which is hard to do sometimes. So, that's all for now.
Does anybody have any?
You going over this?
Questions?
That's all, I'll do that on the action item.
Okay. We will move on to 7.1, this is the approval of the July 29th regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda, under business, under claims and accounts.
Four bills, uh, this month, $159,446.60.
All right. In your board packet, there is the Glendon Felton student activity bills. Um, we need to put a dollar amount in that as well?
We haven't been.
No.
Okay. All right. And the Dilworth one is in there, there's a resignation of Emily Lang. This was at the, effective at the end of this past school year. And also the resignation of Sarah Gerads, also at the end of this school year. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Any questions? Hearing no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to 9.1, student handbooks. Um, that was sent out to everyone. Anybody have any questions on any of that?
I have a few.
Okay.
Um, in the elementary handbook, it talks about the snack program.
Yes.
Can we add in there that the cap is $100 per family?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, and then, the middle school one, and this is just out of curiosity, so kids, if they don't want to stand for the pledge of allegiance, they don't have to, is that a state law legislative thing, or is that a...
They have to be respectful, but if you, if you call back...
I'm guessing that's backed by legislation, is that true?
It's federal.
Oh, it's federal.
Supreme Court decision too. That was, that was a big thing when I was on before, and everybody said, well, how could you vote to do it that way? I said, well, I didn't believe it, but I'm not going to fight the Supreme Court.
Yeah, you don't really have much of a choice.
It was back in 2009.
Old Eddie Schultz was trying to get me on the phone, I had to say something one or the other, but I think I helped him with it.
DGF was the test, the poster child for that, as an issue.
They didn't, they didn't have to recite it, we said, but they also didn't have to stand it.
They don't have to stand, they just have to be respectfully sitting.
Okay. Kind of disappointing, but, I mean, not that we have a choice in the matter.
But that there would be people that would want it.
Right.
I do have a question, is it still a state law where we're supposed to do it once or twice a week?
Once a week.
Once a week, okay.
I had a question on the 912 student handbook, I know we had approved it a couple years ago, excused absences, college visits, and they weren't in the handbook.
Hmm, it's someplace, I don't know if it's in there now, but it's two days.
Two, yeah, two visits, or yeah, two days, or whatever, so it's in there. I was reading it on night, so.
Yeah.
I apologize, I just didn't see the list there, I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed in the handbook, so.
Then I had a question on the high school handbook, like, so with academics and athletics, do we, are we the ones that are the AD and the admin team, the ones that make up the rules as far as like discipline and grades and that kind of thing, or is that come from the Minnesota State High School League? Or is it a combination of both?
Both.
Okay.
Uh, most of it comes from the state high school league.
Okay.
But then we have our, whatever our discipline types of things are, lots of privileges, those kind of things playing too.
That all plays, okay.
And you have court of conduct calls.
Court of conduct, yep.
Okay.
Same with middle level.
Okay.
And what the, and what the high school league has, very specifically, is that they have to be in good standing academically.
Okay. They're more specific to the grade wise, or we're behavior side.
Very general on that.
They're in academic, yeah.
Okay.
Pretty, pretty solid right there with the state high school.
Because anything with having to sit out based on failing a class, that's local.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then, the only thing that I was wondering about is in the high school handbook where it says about the SRO may meet, I'm just wondering if it can be worded a little bit different with more of a, as far as a three, oh gosh, I had it too.
Is that a non-excused?
Yeah.
Because it may be the truancy instead of the SRO. I wonder if that was...
I think we changed that wording in the policy when we went over it, because we changed it from like will be to maybe.
But it says the officer will likely meet, and I think that just sounds too wishy-washy.
Did you say what page it is? Was it for attendance?
Uh, this is under unexcused absence. And there just says upon the third unexcused absence, the student's name will be given to the Clay County truancy officer, the officer will likely meet with the student and make recommendations.
Yeah, so we have a truancy officer that comes about once a week, usually, or not, from the county, and so, um, in there I have letters that go to families after the third unexcused, fifth unexcused, seventh unexcused. During that time, someplace in there, it may be the third time, maybe the fifth time, depends on where it falls, but that truancy officer will meet.
Okay. I just, I don't like the will likely, it just sounds too, maybe, or maybe not. I just think it sounds too wishy-washy.
We maybe can't compel them to meet with, I mean...
You know, that's the hard part, is that we don't know if that third one may fall...
It may be, it may fall anywhere between the third and the...
Well, then it could, could be determined when a meeting will take place, something, instead of, instead of will, you know, I just, I think that just sounds too...
Yeah.
Will probably happen.
Okay.
Will be determined.
And that's...
We have the same thing in ours, says the officer will likely meet with the student and make recommendations to the principal after the fifth unexcused absence.
Yeah, I just think it just...
There's a little disconnect there.
Yeah.
Even if we just have something about corresponding, the truancy officer will correspond with.
Yes.
Because then, that's...
Yes, then they could determine which one it needs to be.
It may not be with a student that, that the truancy person, then you're not locked in that, okay, you're, that person, what if they're on vacation and they don't find a replacement in between, but this way, as long as there's correspondence.
Yeah.
Because I guess there were times where it was phone calls to the family, or they went to their house.
Right.
I just think that sounds more like it has some substance to it.
Okay.
We have a new course, something that corresponds, just so that we know, we'll communicate, we'll communicate, because then we're not saying physically going to see them.
Right, right. Okay.
Very good.
All right, so we're on student handbooks, we are 9.1, looking for a motion to approve the first reading.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any further discussions, questions?
Is this just the first one, or does it have to be before it goes out, or this is it?
This is it, because it's not a policy, so we don't have to have two readings.
So, do we want to just say the first reading, or do you want to change?
Oh, we don't, yeah, it shouldn't have first reading, that shouldn't, to approve the, the handbooks.
Thank you for catching that.
So I'll make a motion to approve the handbook with the adjustment of the things that were discussed, um, this evening. The, do you want to write that in there, Amy?
Yep.
We will communicate.
Yeah. We'll communicate.
With the recommended...
With the recommended language changes to the student handbook.
Got it.
And then there's a second by you, Amy?
Yep.
And, any further discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 9.2, this is the non-certified contract for Lydia Amundson, paraprofessional, at the start of the school year.
Please approve it, so she doesn't have four of them to go after.
I have a motion.
So moved. Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David.
Any certain position for this, or is this just an open?
Special N?
Uh, Mary Ann's not here, so I couldn't tell you which, which site.
What, the, the paraprofessional?
Yeah, you know.
This, this girl that we're just hiring? Middle school.
Yeah, middle school.
Thank you.
And we are interviewing today too, so stay tuned.
And I told the personnel committee on that, one didn't show up.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right, this is 9.3, this is the superintendent contract for 2021 contract year.
And the one that I almost didn't have ready for tonight.
Yes.
The one?
Seriously, it came in right before.
Yes, yeah, he did.
Forgot about it.
Yep. Any questions?
You know what we got, the email, right?
Yep, I just took out the red line, now it worked.
Yep. Okay, any questions?
No.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Raleigh, is there a second?
Oh, Laura.
Laura?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. This is additional class requirements, this is for the 2020 graduation requirements. So Brian, passing things out.
So, you're getting a redlined version, and of course, I'll take out the red lines after, but this way, I want you to be able to see exactly what things are changed from... So, the last time the board has actually approved a course handbook, which includes the graduation requirements, was 1617, okay? It, that's not that unusual that it doesn't get, if you think to college guidebooks and what else not, you're locked in for a four-year book, typically when you go to college, the class of such and such. So, back in 1617, when it was approved, everything that is, you can see what things were, let's say in red or in the yellow, means some of those things that we're adapting. So, back in 1617, the school board approved the graduation requirements for the classes of 2017 through 2020. Now, as we've discussed today, um, and I talked to personnel committee, Wayne, Katie, and I have been working on, starting to do an update, basically what you're going to get before December, is this same one-page sheet for each of the next three grades, the kids that are in grade 10, 11, and 12. So the only thing tonight we need is the seniors, because this is the solution for the issue that we came up, that we found out about. So you'll notice, in the first, in part in A, the language arts, there's no point in having English 12 or English elective, since if you have English electives, just leave it as English electives. Then, the social studies, that's all current, that is right from that 1617 handbook. Some of the confusion that's happened for the kids and the counselors is there's been two or three different documents floating out there, removing civics and, and things like that, but the board, it's never been brought to the board for approval. So we went back to the 1617 one, this was the current. So, civics was in there, so there's no changes in social studies. The big change is in science, to meet the state of Minnesota requirements. The three things that are in the state of, the two things that are in the state of Minnesota requirements, one involves the total amount of credits, you must have three... You must have three credits. Number two, that we were not meeting, is you must have a full credit of chemistry or And that's where we had an issue, because you notice, we were putting chemistry, physics, or environmental science, anatomy, and physiology. That does not meet the Minnesota Department of Education requirements for the state of Minnesota. So, we've got to remove that. We don't have a choice in that. This is not something we'll go back to the staff and say, we really want your, no, this is a state of Minnesota requirement.
Okay.
So, how many kids does that actually affect? How many of these years?
Forty-some kids of this year's seniors.
Have not taken.
Have not taken, because they usually take it as juniors. They can't take it until their junior year, physics or chemistry. So, if they didn't take it last year, or they didn't pre-register for physics or chemistry this year, 39 of the kids, that's why we've been working very vigorously on creating a solution. And we've got a solution for it for this year. And what's going to happen is we only have one teacher in the science department that has the licensure to do it. Of our three science teachers, two of them have life science, which means if they have a life science major or degree, they can teach ninth grade physical science, they can teach biology courses, and they can teach environmental science, but they cannot teach physics or chemistry at the senior high level. So, Aaron Tank is the only one that can teach it. So, the solution for these kids that are seniors is going back to 1617 and when this all was implemented, physical science was changed to intro to physics and intro to chemistry. Meaning that the kids all got a half-credit of physics and a half-credit of chemistry as a ninth grader, but they need a full credit. So, it's an, we can come up with easy solutions moving forward. Easy solutions is the kids take physical science in ninth grade, they take biology in tenth, and you must take physics, chemistry, or a third option that is a new course that we have to put in place, which is a STEM field related, that gives them a third option that's more of the hands-on with it, which is something that with the trades in the first place works extremely well for those kids. So, that's an option that will be coming in November, December, when we come back to you. But for these seniors, we can't put that course together this year. So, what will happen is, we're going to set up, the plan right now is for one semester opportunities for the kids, two in chemistry, two in physics. That'll pick up their extra half-credit that they need.
So, it, it's chemistry or physics?
And it has to be a full credit of one.
So, they did chemistry last year or physics last year?
They're done. They're good. They're good. They're good as gold. But there's forty-some kids.
Funny to make sure I was reading it right.
Yeah, because there's forty-some kids that haven't. And the problem, Raleigh, is that some of the kids took anatomy and physiology because they thought that would meet the requirements, and it doesn't. So, it's basically looking for the kids that took anatomy and physiology and are not signing up for chemistry or physics. They got to get another half-credit. They can either take the regular chemistry or physics course, sign up for that, or those that really do not want to take a full year of chemistry or physics, they can take the general chemistry semester course, general physics semester course that we're putting together.
So, there are roughly 49 conversations that had to be, have to be had.
You got it.
Good conversations. We have letters ready to go out tomorrow morning.
Well, I appreciate you guys catching this for Jay and Aiden's class here. I don't want to be standing up there shaking hands and knowing that kids won't be graduating, so, you know, it's just a minute, it's being addressed and.
Jay took chemistry last year.
Yeah.
The only reason I caught it was being a parent myself, to be honest. And, you know, then all of a sudden, it got me asking questions because of being a former science teacher. So, again, it's a problem, and we've got to correct it, and we just have to be transparent about it.
Yep, absolutely.
Is there anybody that would have taken a half-credit of one of them earlier on then?
Well, and that was one of the, that's one of the searches that we've been doing through the student information system, because it's possible that a student took a semester on a, and not doing very well, but passed.
Yeah.
And then didn't take the second semester. So, there's a thing called a query that you can put into the student information system, and it can run some reports.
But they'd only have to do a half-credit more again then.
Exactly. If, if they took a half-credit and they passed that, they're done, but they'd have to take another half-credit of electives. Wouldn't have to necessarily be in chemistry or physics.
They have to take a full.
They do, but on their transcripts for the seniors, remember, they took physical science and divided it up into a semester of intro to chemistry and a semester of intro to physics.
Okay.
So, that gave them a half-credit.
So, they took a half-credit.
So, if they got through half-credit of the, of the general chemistry as a junior and quit, they'd actually have a credit with chemistry. That was not the intent by the department or any of the states. The idea was it was supposed to be a senior, junior or senior credit of chemistry or physics after you've already had physical science. So, we're correcting that moving forward. So, that's a science issue. Then, if you look at math as no issue, E, the reason you're seeing the freshman seminar kicked out is because that's one of the requirements that's coming for, like this year's ninth grade, they will either take freshman seminar or add it for the career piece. So, that's the only reason it was listed there, but it's not a requirement for this group of seniors. And the other thing is the technology elective. Back in 1617, the only option that the kids had was Microsoft Office or Digital Media. And what we're doing is, we're saying, we're not, we're not harming anybody, we're not, we're not making it more restrictive, we're actually giving them more options. So, that's why, you notice, it says computer and business communication, computer science. So, those STEM classes that we've started, those count also. So, this is giving them more options. That's why it's highlighted. Then the other change on F, back in 1617, their requirement at that time, again, this is something we caught two years ago, was that students by what was approved, brought to the board and approved in the handbook, said that you had to take a credit of visual arts or one credit of music, and it had to be specific to either a band or choir, which didn't give the kids options. So, now you notice what we're doing is, we're giving kids more options. We're saying they can either take a credit of music, a credit of visual arts, or they can take a half-credit of any of them to get through the full credit. So, it's not making it more restrictive, so there's nothing you're doing to penalize kids on that piece at all. So, this, what's being brought forward, will solve our issue for the seniors. I mean, we've got monitoring to do, and then we'll come back to you in November, December. We want that done by that point in time so that it will not impede the process for pre-registration after the first of the year. Questions? Questions for Wayne, since this is his baby.
Well, you had done, Lindsay, you had suggested a, a meeting with the senior parents, just offering it, whether they have five people show up or no people show up, or whatever, just to be transparent on this.
And easiest might be with the back-to-school night, to be able to go through it with them.
Oh, that would be.
Because at least then it's, it's already like its schedule.
The seniors is one thing, that's, that's the short term, right now.
Right.
But it also impacts juniors too.
Yeah.
So, they're, they're getting a letter as well tomorrow, junior parents and families and seniors too. It's essentially the same scenario, but they have two years instead.
Yeah, they have two years.
Because a lot of the kids signing up for the junior classes assume that anatomy and physiology is going to take care of them.
Yeah.
And so, now, when they find out it doesn't, that's going to drop the numbers in anatomy and physiology, because some of those kids aren't going to take it if they know that it's not going to meet those requirements.
I just think it'd be helpful if people have questions.
Sure, can do that.
Just put it out there, and like Sandy said, if five people show up, five people show up, but it's offered.
Be nice if we had a street.
What?
Be nice if we had a street in front of the school.
This is just an inconvenience, Raleigh. The municipality, Lennon is taking care of it.
And we'll talk about that at operations, because I do have some updates from last week's meeting on that.
Okay, so.
Go back to Cecil. Don't bring that stuff here. Shaking hands.
So, any other discussion on that before we?
Oh, no.
Okay, so 10.1, looking for the motion to.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 10.2, this is a program increase, and again, Lindsay had already touched base on that because of the industrial tech, then moves up the fact to a full-time position. So, looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Raleigh. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David.
Assume that this person's available or wants to.
Yep, Wayne's had the conversation, and, and again, this is not a tenured person, so it's not like you got a rule about down the road, do we have to decrease the program? This is a probationary teacher, so at the end of the year, if we say, okay, you're being dropped down to a point six, you don't have to go through the rigmarole about reduction of programs and all that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right. After this meeting here, we, operations are meeting for a little bit. Amy has to maybe step out a little bit early. So, our next school board meeting is Monday, August 26th, and that will be at this site. We don't have any committee meetings before that meeting scheduled. We have back-to-school night.
Back-to-school night that night, and sixth graders at 5:30 and seventh and eighth graders at seven, so it's going to be crazy.
Okay.
All righty.
We're going to use canoes at the high school.
Yeah.
Why is nobody laughing?
We may need to use the boardroom then for the meeting.
I, I don't think we're using this room for anything, the middle school.
We'll keep you posted on whether.
What time is that for school night?
5:30 for the sixth graders, the seventh and eighth graders at seven.
So, does that take like an hour and a half, or does it take an hour?
Sixth graders, it'll be about an hour and a half, maybe hour, hour fifty.
I prefer to be in the boardroom that night though anyway.
And I have two sixth graders and a farmer, so I might not be here.
Yeah, it's okay. It's acceptable.
Yep.
Who gets to take notes?
Best plan for the boardroom.
Okay.
It should be a short.
It depends on if they're micros or not, that's all.
Okay, anything else? Anything else to add? Nothing else to add? Really is adjourned, 6:42.